If I could ask everybody to take their seats, please. Good evening and Happy New Year. I now reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Education at 6:00 PM with Bridge, Cruz, I know Mr. Na is here, Mr. Schaefer, and myself present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Pat?
The Board met in closed session from 5:00 PM to...
5:54.
5:54 PM regarding student discipline matters, conference with labor negotiators, ACT and CSCE, public employee appointment, elementary and junior high assistant principals, and public employee discipline dismissal release. The Board voted to appoint Lisa Listah as Assistant Principal of Liberty Elementary School. Effective date to be determined by unanimous vote of 5-0 with Bridge, Cruz, Gagne, Na, and Schaefer voting yes. No further action was taken, which requires public disclosure.
Thank you. Leading the Pledge of Allegiance tonight is Mr. Bridge.
You'll please stand and face the flag, please.
Ready, begin. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We're now on to item 1C, comments from our student representative. Unfortunately, Ms. Kim could not join us this evening, so move on to item 1D, which is comments from employee representatives. We are now at comments from employee representatives. I've been informed that Ms. Walker, ACT president, will not be joining us this evening. Is Mr. Hernandez, the president of CSCE, here? Okay, no comments. Then we'll turn to Ms. Barbara Bearden, the chair, president.
Good evening, President Gagne, school board members, Dr. Enfield, Cabinet, and Chino Valley Community. Happy New Year. As we all know, Omicron has hit our community hard. School districts everywhere are dealing with employee shortages. Although it's been difficult to manage the stories of teachers and support staff working together to ensure students are learning, and every department, including the kitchen, is covered, is inspirational. One principal and I were just talking, and we both mentioned the members of our staff are our heroes because their teamwork and grit to get through each day was commendable. Thank you to all the administrators who covered classrooms, to the teachers who taught additional students or extra periods in the day, and to the staff members who helped other departments. Your efforts did not go unnoticed, and our community is stronger because of you. We are persevering. As such, we are already seeing an improvement in overall staff and student attendance. We also need to take a moment to recognize our cabinet, along with Dr. Ashby, for guiding school administrators through another pivot and new guidelines from Cal OSHA and the County Department of Health. Their behind-the-scenes work helps site administrators stay up to date and ensure we are following all the rules. Finally, I'd like to thank our families who have been flexible and understanding over the last few weeks. It is because of your children and your families we love what we do each and every day. Please remember to screen your kids each day before they come to school. If they are sick, please keep them at home until they are feeling better. Working together, we will continue to persevere and keep our students in school. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bearden. Moving on to item 1E, before we move into comments from the audience on items not on the agenda, Happy New Year. It is a new year. It's a new year for the Board and a new year on the calendar. I just want to walk through just some things that I hope we can do together as a group. We're all already here this evening. I know everybody is eager to speak on the variety of issues that are on our agenda, as well as a variety of issues that may not be on our agenda. But I want to say that I think everyone is here because they care about students. We may not agree on every single specific issue, but in my heart of hearts, I believe everybody here is all here for the same reason. Members of the audience may say things that you may not agree with. You know, that's going to happen in a public setting. That does not, though, merit booing people, talking over people, making remarks while people are speaking. Everybody here has come to speak their piece if they wish to public comment, and I want to give everybody the respect of having their three minutes uninterrupted. So I would ask that, in the spirit of this being productive and everybody being heard and not being afraid to be heard and not being interrupted when they're trying to be heard, that we try to be as productive as possible. Just to go over some of the rules, since some people I've seen before, we always have new faces at our meetings. Our Board Secretary, Ms. Kaler, tries to announce three names at a time of who's going to be coming up next to speak. I would encourage that if you hear your name, that you line up behind the podium spaced out as much as possible, so that when the speaker before you is done, we can move on to the next speaker. We used to do that in our Board meetings, and it was productive. I would also say that one of the issues we've been having that I've heard from people attending these meetings is they can't hear their name when their name is called, or they might be outside. So I just want to make sure that everybody who puts in a speaker card gets their chance to speak, and we don't overlook anybody. So when you hear your name, if you can get in line, that would be great. Three minutes, just to kind of describe our system. Mr. Na is at the helm of our system right now, is the clerk of the Board. He's pushing buttons, and it's timed. So the green light is go, the yellow is 30 seconds, please try to wrap it up, and the red is time, and that's just when you're done. And so that we can hear as many people as possible tonight, I would just also ask that we respect that speaker system. I will ask for a number of cards submitted. We've had some issues over the past seven or eight months of not knowing when we're going to take comments not on the agenda. At every single meeting, I will ask to see how many comments are not on the agenda. If it's a reasonable amount to get through right now, we'll take all the comments for efficiency's sake, so everybody can be heard at that time. Just so you know, our student comments are prioritized, so if we do have a student speaker, and you're wondering why, they may be going first. We try to support our students participating in the public process, and so that's why we prioritize student cards. If we have an overwhelming amount of speakers on comments not on the agenda, we are going to hear everybody. So I want to be clear. We will hear everybody at this meeting. We may, though, move the remaining comments to the end of the agenda so the Board can get through their business. But it is my insurance that I will push that we hear every single person in this room who wishes to speak this evening. We just may need to get through our agenda items because they were agendized, and I know we have people here to speak on agenda items this evening. With that, I will move into the comments not on the agenda. Pat, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items?
We have 13 requests to speak on non-agenda items.
Okay. Then we will take all 13 requests. Speakers, you'll be called in the order that request was received. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Once the Board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The Board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind, the Board typically does not respond to comments during this time on the agenda, as it is reserved specifically for public comments. Individual members of the Board will respond during Board comments at the end. Additionally, the Board does its best to support the public's right to address its elected officials. It is also important that the Board conduct its business in an orderly and fair fashion, as provided in Board Bylaw 9323. In the event that an unusual amount of speaker cards is submitted for any item, the Board will hear up to 30 minutes of comments. In the case of non-agenda items, the Board can, if it chooses, hear the remainder of the comments after all business has been concluded. Mr. Na, will you please explain the light system?
Speakers, you have three minutes to address the Board. Beginning comments at green light, and yellow light means you have 30 seconds. The red light means your time is over. And please note that Board Policy 1312-1 outlines the proceeding procedure for anyone who wishes to file complaint against the district employees.
We have two student speakers on agenda items. They've listed medical discrimination, but I believe that's a non-agenda item. Hilda Rodriguez, followed by Samara Sanchez.
Thanks, but no thanks for the at-home COVID-19 test kits. The psychopaths in office have really gotten sly on getting what they want the people to do. Everything that is free is not always good for you, not everything that shines will be gold. We do not concede our bodies to these self-administrating assault kits. Good doctors, don't test for anything that you aren't sick of, especially when there are no reliable tests that can differentiate between all the Corona Flu variants. The good doctors that are usually not connected with Big Pharma corporations, elite university mafias, and have always followed the true science and has and will always forever be true and factual, factual. Nothing will ever beat God's natural immunity, and it will always beat man-made immunity, and that is a fact. Don't let yourself be fooled by flip-flop, Emperor Fauci and his puppets, along with the hypocritical philanthropists that make themselves look nice and kind by giving away some of their money, knowing that they manipulate the corporations for their wealth and control the sheeple that think they are getting everything for free. Take it or leave it. You decide at your own risk for your future expense and your health. It is a time when everything is possible. Technology is advanced more than anyone can imagine. Nanoparticles don't belong in our bodies, just like liberals say, "My body, my choice." I too say, "My body, my choice," but we choose life. We choose life for others that can't speak for themselves. Proverbs 31, 8 through 9. As humans are the test rats for this toxic poison, in June 2021, a study, 8 out of 10 pregnancies led to miscarriage after getting the jab. These findings are being overlooked and intentionally hidden. These narcissistic psychopaths are the 21st Joseph Mangala, aka the Angel of Death. If you still cannot see that this concoction is not good for your body with all the facts and deaths from this jab, then I don't know what will help you to see it. But if you don't get to know what's in the jab, how stupid can you be to inject an unknown substance into your body and say it's good for you? We say stop medical discrimination.
The next student speaker is Samara Sanchez.
That's my sister. We'll be taking her time.
That this mRNA vaccine is going to genetically modify...
Yes, it will. The mRNA will actually take a piece of your DNA out. It will replace it with a synthetic one, and a synthetic piece. So, you know, who knows what they're going to modify about you? But that also makes you patentable.
That's right.
They can own you. And let me tell you, they've already started the vaccinations. They've already started them. They started them a long time ago because the test vaccinates you. The article right here in front of me, and here's what it says, yes, they can vaccinate us through the nasal test swabs and target the brain. Now, here's the thing. As a doctor, I said, "This is crazy," because, you see, you're wearing a mask to cover your... Now, they wouldn't hate it. They would not allow you into a store if you just wear a mask over your nose. You've got to wear it over your mouth, because supposedly the COVID-19 is in your saliva. Well, if it's in your saliva, then all they have to do is swab the inside of your mouth like they do for a DNA test. But no, they take these long Q-tips and they stick them all the way back almost into your brain. They stick them back to the back of the nasal sinuses, and then they twist them. All right, here's what they're doing. First of all, there is a very thin plate of bone that covers the brain between the brain and the nasal sinus, and it's called the cribiform plate. And every doctor knows about the cribiform plate. All right. Now, the cribiform plate has some openings in it where olfactory nerves, nerves from the nose, go through that plate into the brain, and bone, this kind of bone in the cribiform plate is porous anyway, so substances can go through it. So when they take that swab and they put it back there and twist it, what they're doing is depositing things back there. This, you can't see this, but this shows that they have nanoparticles that are actually on the ends of the Q-tips that they're putting in there that can get into your brain. They can be hooked up to the cloud. So they are already vaccinating you with the test. When you go to get tested, you are actually being vaccinated and implanted with nanoparticles.
Thank you.
Jim Gallagher, followed by Parent Advocacy of Chino Valley, followed by Byron Gonzalez.
Great. I'm Jim Gallagher. I'm here to give accolades tonight to Superintendent Enfield, Christina Gagne, and the Board, and the Chino Valley Unified School District. As you know, we had an expo and job fair last Friday over at the Chino Hills Community Center, and through the cooperation of Chino Valley Unified, we had 267 attendees. 121 of them were students, and 32 businesses participated. It was kind of exciting to see all the students that came out, and this is part of the Chino Valley Chamber Upskill Chino Valley Program. That's where we have a four-pronged program, and the approach, of course, is to focus on workforce development, entrepreneurship development, economic development, and leadership development, and we're especially encouraging the students to do that. I especially also want to thank the teachers who let us go into the schools and speak to the students directly, and I think that helped with the excitement that was generated. In particular, I want to thank the culinary arts class at Chino High School, Elizabeth Williams, Martha Martinez, the Career Center Guidance Technician at Chino High School, Michael S. Collins from Ayala High School, who is part of the engineering, he's an engineering and design instructor, and also Janelle Acker from Chino Hills High School, who allowed them, our people, to come into the classroom. And we also visited Buena Vista High School, I might add. So first of all, hats off to you, Christina Gagne, for helping to bring this forward. In the future, we are going to have more of these job fairs and expos, and we look forward to bringing something positive here to the Chino Valley for our students. Thank you.
Parent Advocacy of Chino Valley, followed by Byron Gonzalez, followed by Heather Peery.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. So it's been an eventful time for our leadership group since we last met here. We have met with Chino City Council, attended the County Board of Supervisors meeting, met with our Board members, attorneys, and elective officials in every position you can imagine. They say knowledge is power, and everything we learn, our children will continue to benefit from. Here is the issue. About nine months ago, we were told things, we were told that things are out of your control. You told us to contact elective officials. They, as well as you, are elective officials. We are thankful for the encouragement to get more involved. We have learned so much. It was also confirmed from Sacramento many times that our superintendent and our Board members have more power and influence in these decisions than they may know or may tell us. Now, we can give you the benefit of the doubt and hope that you steered us in a different direction, not knowing you had more power, but now that you know, it's time to roll up your sleeves and push for what is right for our children and staff together. While we have tried and learned things we never imagined, going to the end of the world and back, what it feels like, we are asking you to do the same. It's not easy, and it sucks, but it's necessary. We do actually appreciate everything that the staff and the teachers continue to do to keep our kids in school. That, to me, goes a long way and shows that you do truly have some care for our children and staff. But let's continue to find ways to stop the downward spiral of learning loss, because that is where we are definitely needing to focus on. Our children will ultimately benefit when everyone puts their labels aside and brings their talent and their knowledge to the table to come up with real and fair solutions together. Also, on a side note, we found out many things about the SB 328 on later start times. While we have contacted the Education Committee in Sacramento and Senator Leva, we need the community to link up with us, along with you, to push our senators to put the bill back on the table to be optional. We have resources on our very own page that you guys can use, and Christina and Cruz are also working with us to come up with a resolution to help fix this. I do know from talking to them, they said that our superintendent and Board members have a lot of power when it comes to these things, and it's their fault that we're in this position. That was their words, not mine. I can say that the government in general does not want parent involvement. That's evident. And now, that should only reveal to everyone that it's more than ever needed for all of us to be involved in our children's education. Please, parents, please, staff, please, you guys, get involved, because that's where we will truly make the difference. You guys know, together we're better, and if we don't start working together, rolling up those sleeves, going shoulder to shoulder, our kids will continue to suffer.
Thank you.
Byron Gonzalez, followed by Heather Perry, followed by Carla Van de Steeg.
Hello there, guys. My name is Byron Gonzalez, and I work in Ayala High School as an instructional aide. I want to address two specific things. The first one is the vaccine mandates, as well as the face mask mandates. I don't think they help whatsoever. Now, I'm going to start off with a quote from Saul Alinsky, the Marxist, who says, "Never let a crisis go to waste." So here's what's happening. Gavin Newsom, as well as all the other five, the other four cronies, the governors of five specific states, whom are all Democrat, made a specific executive order for everyone who was COVID-positive to go into nursing homes. That's where all of the deaths, most of the deaths in California, as well as those five specific states, happened. The reason they did this was to incur fear. The reason you guys, people, the elected officials, incur fear is to control the people in the specific state. Now, if you want to look at the, if you want to look at the specific mortality rate between people who are our age, the people who are not at risk, it's about .003%. So there is no reason for us to have a mandate at all. Now, what's really happening, it's actually more of a free pass to do what we, to allow us to have our freedoms, but it's actually, that's not free at all. That's actually pretty draconian. So my other specific issue is the gender restrooms, the, you know, gender restrooms, you know, the man being able to identify as a woman to go in a different gender restroom. Now, specifically with that, there's pretty distinct differences between men and women. Now, of course, back in 2013, it was actually labeled gender identity disorder. Now, in the DSM-5, it's now labeled gender dysphoria, and what that did is actually changed the word to mean something different. What it is now is if we're allowing women, I mean, men who self-identify as women to go into women's restrooms, when is it going to stop? Does that mean that if Mike Tyson decides to just say, "Oh, I'm a woman," and then fight women, and then, of course, a lot of people are going to say, "Oh, it's never going to go that far." But that's actually already happened, because in MMA, there's this man who self-identifies as a woman, his name is Fallon Fox. He's actually started dominating the women's sports, the women's MMA, and started, he actually broke the squall of a woman doing it. Now, if you want to look at the Olympians, there's actually, the record for the fastest mile for women was actually beaten by 400s high school boys. So, number one, I don't agree with the mask mandate, as well as the vaccine mandate, and number two, I don't agree with the gender, the self-identification gender restroom, because, of course, if you give them a mile...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Perry, followed by Carla Van de Steeg, followed by Deb Rosen.
Good evening, Board. I wanted to just let you know of an incident that happened to our son yesterday here at Don Lugo High School. He was at his fifth-period math class yesterday, and his mask had fallen underneath his nose. He says that that's what happens when he's talking. And his math teacher called security on him and had him escorted out of class. Yeah. He felt awkward, he told me, and he felt really nervous. He was very caught off guard, he said. The security guard, he said, in his words, also treated him kind of rude, because he felt awkward silently walking with the security guard, and he started to make conversation with him, saying, you know, "I wasn't deliberately taking off my mask, it fell." And the security guard said, "Well, you have it off right now." And, you know, because security was called on him, the security guard is looking at him in a certain way. When I talked to Assistant Principal yesterday, asking if that is the protocol with Don Lugo, if a kid is kicked out of class, do you call security? And the answer was no. She had sent a kid out of class for the same reason the previous day, and I was told this has been happening on a regular basis. So what I was concerned about was his learning loss, because this happened in the middle of the class, so when he was sent to the office, he didn't know how to do his homework. He was, and then also denied instruction, because they didn't send him back to fifth-period class, they had him stay for the rest of the period. Then another concern that I think parents would also ask, too, is I wasn't even called at all about this incident that happened. So if security's called on your son or daughter, I think parents should be notified, "Hey, this is what happened today." Whether it was positive or negative, or it didn't turn into a big deal or not, you should call parents to say that security was called on your son or daughter. Wasn't called about that. I had to call. So I just, you know, I haven't heard from the teacher. I wanted to know what she's trying to achieve by doing this. Haven't heard from her yet. Sent an email, no response. But this type of behavior, I don't see how this is encouraging or conducive learning environment and how this is a good parent-teacher relationship. How is she going to reestablish this type of relationship with students? How does this encourage students in math class to just think about math? He's got to think about getting escorted by security, making sure that this is over his nose. I mean, I don't know if this is what Don Lugo's saying for their teachers to do, but this, I mean, we know COVID's real, okay, it gets people sick, we know all of that. But this type of, it gets us acting like first graders, because this mask was provided by the teacher, so now we've got to start talking about things like, well, then make sure your masks fit every single student. It's one size. We're getting into these little things. Kids just need to think about math class, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carla Van de Steeg, followed by Deb Rosen, followed by Julie Santa Sola.
Good evening. We know, when we know better, we do better. That is a phrase that I have heard and used for myself and my students, and it is now time for our district to do better. You need to stop the discrimination that is happening right before your very eyes. By not stopping it, you're actually encouraging it. The last couple of months have shown us that vaccinated and unvaccinated can get and spread COVID. It's basically slapping us in the face when we go to our school sites every day right now. The very fact that we know this and still are only testing unvaccinated weekly is blatant discrimination. I know you'll say you're following all of the guidelines and list all the places of the guidelines you're following, but when we know better, we do better. It is time for you to decide that you're not going to allow discrimination to happen in your district. This is a thing that we stand against at our school sites, but now our own leaders are supporting it and condoning it by letting it continue. Either you test everybody, or you test nobody. When the vaccinated teacher next door can get and spread COVID, and we know that that's happening, it's happening on my school site, and isn't being tested, how is that for the health and safety of all of our people? That's what I keep hearing, is that the district is for the health and safety of all of its people, but your choices are not backing up that claim. So it's time to step up, stop the discrimination, and make a decision to either test everyone, which I don't really want you to do, so you know, or test no one. You will be held liable for this and should do the right thing, because when we know better, we do better. Like Martin Luther King said, who we just celebrated on Monday, "The time is right, is always right, to do what's right."
Yep. Thank you.
Deb Rosen, followed by Julie Santa Sola, followed by Nicole Vaccario.
Board Superintendent and Community, I would first like to thank the Board members who met with me and a few teachers on behalf of some of our concerns and ideas that we had over winter break. It was nice to be able to share some of our concerns and ideas, and we felt heard and understood. With that being said, we're here to bring up a few more concerns. However, this time, we don't have as many ideas to help you address them. Considering that we all came back from break into the classrooms and back to work, many did not. Many staff were homesick with COVID. It's extremely apparent that COVID does not discriminate, and even the vaccinated and the boosted will see their day with this virus. As you are well aware, there are guidelines from the governor, health department, county, et cetera, which ask the unvaccinated staff to test weekly. This seemed like an appropriate accommodation instead of being forced to take... This seemed like an appropriate accommodation, instead of being forced to take the vaccine. So we obliged. However, now that it's extremely apparent, the unvaccinated are not the only ones at risk for contracting and transmitting this virus to others, we ask, why are we the only ones testing for it? I don't, please let me be clear, I am not advocating for testing for everyone. I don't even believe the unvaccinated should be tested weekly. However, if you're going to enforce a policy to test, then it should be equally asked of everybody. The data is clear and abundant, and shows us that there's a clear distinction of discrimination for the staff member who chooses to be vaccine-free. They have separate set of rules for isolation and for testing. This is 100% unfair and discriminatory when everyone can catch this virus and transmit it. You see the data, you know the facts, you're continuing to allow it, it's wrong. It's not a union issue, it's not a district issue, it's both parties' issue, and it needs to be corrected, because both parties are allowing it. We have heard that the district will follow the guidelines to keep everyone safe in in-person learning. The guidelines are being given to you from a broken system. They keep changing, they don't keep people from getting the virus, they don't make any sense, they aren't founded in any science, and they're completely discriminating. If you follow and enforce these guidelines, that means that you stand for what they say. That means you too are enforcing discrimination. You're liable for the guidelines you enforce, and you're responsible for the directives you make us adhere to. I have no grand ideas to help. I think a ton of this stuff is nonsensical and ridiculous. Testing doesn't work, look at your numbers. Masking doesn't work, look at your numbers. Vaccinations don't work, that speaks for itself. At some point, we need to get back to normal. Finally, the protocol for testing is plain and simple discriminatory. Address that head-on, or you're advocating for it. We must stand for what's right, and stop hiding behind a broken public health system that does not have a clue of the guidelines they're putting out. Please take a stand like other districts, do the right thing, because it's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Julie Santasola, followed by Nicole Vaccario, followed by Christina Mooney.
Good evening. I'd like to start off by thanking the Board for providing the school sites and posting the information for the new guidelines regarding student medical exemptions on the district website, which took effect on January 2022, or 20, sorry. As a parent, we count on the district to provide information to the community with new information pertaining to our children, provided by our governor and our president. With that being said, I'm highly disappointed with you and the district that sat on this information for 11 months, and had I not brought this to your attention back in December, the board, at that board meeting, this information would still be sitting on someone's desk, unavailable to the community, or to the staff, or to the parents. You have listened to me speak about my son's medical condition since August of last year. Not once did any of you reach out to me, until after I had emailed you at that November meeting stating what I had found, which is sadly disappointing from every single one of you up there. Sorry, I lost my place. With vital information to parents, students, and staff, I have learned to do my own research, especially when it comes to my child's health. I had to find this, all on my own. Not even the school nurse or staff, sadly, knew about these new policies and guidelines, which all of us parents, as you know, go to first, not to the district. Mind you, this exemption is a long process, and according to their new guidelines, will probably not be approved for my son, as many other parents', children, it will not be approved for. So, with that being said, I pray that with this new year, that we can start off on the right foot, with honest, open communication, transparency from the district, and no longer hiding things from the staff, the students, the parents, or the community. That we have transparency, and we put our children first, working together for your employees and for student choice. Thank you.
Nicole Vaccario, followed by Christina Mooney, followed by Cindy Foisey.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nicole Vaccario. On January 4th, at 7:00 a.m., I walked into the school site I've worked at for the past nine years. I noticed signs on the door informing students and teachers they could not walk through the admin building. In fact, my own daughter was turned away at the door, told that students were not allowed in at all. I walked into my office, an office that I don't share with anyone. My office is located behind the switchboard. I sat down at my desk, turned on my computer, and walked over to the workroom to check my mailbox. I noticed two employees in the mailroom guarding the door there, not allowing teachers inside. I walked back to my office, sat down, and since it was my first day back, I started writing a to-do list. By this time, it's about 7:30, and I find, I finally see my AP. He says, "Good morning." I answer with, "Good morning," and that was it. I got to work at my desk, and about 8:30 a.m., the principal, Diana Yarboy, walked in, and immediately said, "You need to mask up." I replied with, "I'm at my, I'm in my office alone." She said, "You need, you get one of two choices. You either mask up, or you vaccinate. You're not vaccinated, so you need to mask up." I asked, "Even if I'm alone at my desk?" And she replied with, "Yes." I said, "I'm not sitting alone at my desk, wearing a mask." She asked me to follow her to her office, and I did. She again stated that I was not vaccinated, so I needed a mask up. I said, "I'm not sitting at my desk, alone, wearing a mask. I'm alone, I have my own office, nobody walks through there, teachers and students are not allowed in at all, so I don't see the reason why I would have to sit alone at my desk, wearing a mask." She stated I needed to leave the campus, and had to head over to HR immediately, so I did. I left and went straight to HR. I walked into HR about 9:10 a.m. To my surprise, only one person was sitting at their desk, wearing a mask. The employee at the front desk was maskless and asked why I was there. I kind of laughed, and I said, "I was sent here by Diana Yarboy for not wearing a mask at my desk, and I needed to speak with an HR director." I waited a few moments, and one director came out to speak with me. He informed me that I had two choices, wear the mask at my desk, even if I'm alone, or be placed on unpaid admin leave. I asked why HR employees are not held to the same requirements, and he stated, "Because you're at a school site." I said, "Okay, I'm not wearing a shield," because he did offer me that, "or a mask at my desk, alone, so do what's needed." I was placed on admin leave, unpaid admin leave immediately. Hours later, I spoke to Norm Enfield, and he was very cold towards me. I asked why district, why the district employees were not required to wear masks at their desk, and he said they are, and should. I will look into it. I said, "So what the HR director told me about it being because I was at a school site was incorrect? He told me that I made my own choice to be placed on unpaid leave." I said, "None of this makes any sense."
Christina Mooney, followed by Cindy Foisey, followed by Misty Startup. I'm going to give Nicole my time.
I said, "None of this makes any sense," and he said, "It doesn't have to, it's a state mandate, period." I wasn't picked out of a hat for this. It's been a constant bullying, it's been constant bullying about getting vaccinated, and I've been fighting on the front lines of this for a long time. We're going into year three of the same nonsense. I'm being made an example of, and although I don't feel defeated, it's definitely a I come here, I speak at board meetings, they know that, so I'm being discriminated against because of my stance here. Unless we fight this together, we will, this will never go away. I'm going to hold the line, stand strong, and pray. This fight is mine, but there will be another when this vaccine mandate happens. Choose your battle. How much longer are we going to allow this to happen? This is not only happening to me, but my son was, is also in a situation over a mask as well, but he is a special education student and an IEP student, and the district is investigating that. But this is happening to staff, this is happening to students, and this is not right. You should not be getting rid of staff, especially with a staff shortage. Being placed on unpaid leave is ridiculous, because I wouldn't sit at my desk and wear a mask, and my office is, I'm alone in my office. There's no more to the story, it's literally because I would not sit at my desk and wear a mask, and she picked me out, or the district picked me out, because I stand up here and I talk, and I'm on the front lines of this fight. I'm not going to back down now, I'm ready to lose everything for this fight, because I'm done with this nonsense. I'm going to stand my ground and hold it strong.
Cindy Foisey, followed by Misty Startup, followed by Lorraine Harris.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cindy. I'm not going to get into all the cases, statistics, numbers, we all know what the truth is. The narrative is finally being exposed. This COVID pandemic is going to end. Many leaders of other countries are figuring out the lies and ending their mask, testing, and vaccine mandates. The data is exposing the big lie. It's just sickening that so many people have lost their lives and have been injured. Let's pray for them. Now, it's time for us to get on board with this, and these masks, these mandates. The useless diaper on your face, take it off. You are abusing yourself, and you are abusing our children at school. From the beginning, I have tried searching on how this inflammatory vaccine would further harm me. Nothing on the CDC website. I have an autoimmune disease called Hashimoto's hypothyroidism. I don't wish it on anyone. My body is in constant, has constant inflammation, which travels all over my body. By 4:00 p.m. every day, my shoulders and upper back are pulling me down. It is exhausting. I need to lie down to calm it down. In reading Robert Kennedy Jr.'s book, I realized by taking this, by not taking this vaccine, it could, or by taking it, it could or would send me into uncontrollable inflammation. No, thank you. Ten autopsies, autopsies done on ten cadavers who died following vaccination by two leading pathologists in Germany. They found five were very likely, and two probably related to the vaccine. Three cases, they found strong evidence of lethal multi-system inflammation and runaway autoimmunity, including autoimmune diseases like Hashimoto's and autoimmune-triggered hypothyroidism. Isn't that lovely? Can you imagine if I would have taken the vaccine, what I could be today? Dead or in some hospital, well, they'll kill me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Misty Startup, Misty Startup, followed by Lorraine Harris, followed by Jake.
Pat, is that the end of the comments on non-agenda items?
There's four, including Misty Startup.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. I just have several thoughts that have been spinning in my mind as I've listened tonight. I have hearing aids that I've been wearing for about a year now, and it's frustrating, it's, I mean, I don't even have the word. I'm 48 years old, and I'm wearing hearing aids, and all I can say is that when somebody is talking to me with a mask on, I cannot understand them, even with the hearing aids. It's so frustrating, and people don't understand, they don't speak louder, they don't speak more clear, especially when their mouth is muffled. So, I just want to put that out there, that you need to know, you can't see my hearing aids right now, so you wouldn't know that, but you need to be respectful to other people that have unseen needs. I have a daughter that's getting her master's degree in speech pathology. She, the referrals for speech pathologists over the last couple of years has gone up 364% in toddlers because of these masks. It's fine if you have a toddler that's at home and is with you, and you're not wearing a mask, and you're talking to them, but it's not okay for the kids that are in daycare or preschools, and they're having to wear a mask. This is detrimental to these kids. I have six kids, all who go to early morning seminary or Bible study at 6:00 in the morning during their high school years. We've never had any problems with my kids waking up that early, at 6:00 in the morning. I was in high school, I was a cheerleader, I was going to school for practices at 6:00 in the morning. I graduated, I had no problem. I don't understand why the governor is taking it upon himself to tell us when our high schoolers need to start school. That's the parents. If the parents allow their kids to stay up, that's their problem, it's not the governor's. And as far as this employee that's being on leave, we go into restaurants, and we sit without our masks on, with 50 people around us. I have surgical patients that come out of surgery, they don't have a mask on, they're laying there breathing on me, I'm not afraid, they're drinking, they're, you know, getting pain meds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorraine Harris, Lorraine Harris, followed by Jake, followed by the final speaker, Crystal.
Hello, I'm here speaking on behalf of a friend of mine, who, she couldn't be here today. Hello, Board members. There are many things happening in our country that have caused me great concern. There are two incidents that recently happened that I would like to talk about, and that is also the reason why I have decided to make my voice heard. Excuse me. The first incident happened at Ayala a few weeks ago. As a parent, I want to express my disappointment for this school, who sent a long-term dedicated staff member home without pay for not wearing a mask while working alone in a private office. This is not about medical safety, because obviously, everyone can see that it did not follow science, and it did not follow common sense. The second incident happened a few days ago in New West Charter School in LA, where unbacked students were segregated behind barriers and not allowed to attend class. They were denied chairs, they were sitting on the pavement, and they were not allowed to use the restroom. This is way beyond what we can endure anymore. These incidents reminded me of exactly how tyranny started under communism. These should have never happened in America. I know some of you may not appreciate America, since you had never lived in communist countries, but I do, because I came from there. Communism and socialism sounds good in all the propaganda, but in the end, everyone will be victims. Nobody can escape the tragedies, even if you comply, or if you help to push other people to comply, or you show your loyalty to comply, or even if you are already in a high political power, they will eventually come for all of you. Trust me, it is still going on every day in those communist countries, even as we speak. It's just that you don't know about it, due to the control that America, America's media has on you, and what they're doing to silence the people who they disagree with. I do not want to sound scary, but this is fact. You have to experience it to wake up, but then it would be too late for all of us, especially for our next generation. My parents had given up everything to bring me to this country. I'm not going to sit by and allow my children to live through the same horrible life that my parents went through under communism in China. If the schools can do this to their staff, they can do it to their students, and they think they can do anything. I want to make sure that you all know that we, the parents, will never allow such incidents to happen in our schools in this district. Help us to help yourselves, present this kind, prevent this kind of nonsense happening again. As a desperate parent, I sincerely ask you to make the right choice going forward. If not for the sake of your staff and your students, do it for the sake of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake, followed by Crystal, followed by Late Submission, Bernadette.
That'll be the end of the comments after that one.
Happy New Year, everyone. So much has happened in the past month.
Happy New Year, everyone. So much has happened in the past month. Got to love science, right? Let this be a reminder to everyone. The Constitution restricts the government's power and protects our freedoms. I think it's comical and many are convinced that a 99% survival rate allows governments or school board members to strip away our constitutional rights. They use fear, hate, and government overreach as being instilled in our school systems. The Constitution is the law of the land, as I mentioned before. Nothing can infringe on our rights, not the government, not a school board, not a manufactured pandemic with a 99% survival rate. It's comical. We've been labeled conspiracy theorists. How many conspiracy theories need to be proven before we all wake up? In fact, the real conspiracy theorists are wearing masks thinking it's keeping you from getting sick. Still wondering why we never wore one until 2020. It's comical, but sad that we keep fighting for the rights of all liberals, too. But all you care about is your alliance to a political party you think has your back. Neither of them do, by the way. Here's a quote I heard several years ago that has hit me hard in the past several months. Quote, "This is the crossroads in the history of our civilization that will determine whether or not we, the people, reclaim control over our government." You know who said that? Donald Trump at his inauguration five years ago in 2017. We, the people, are reclaiming control of our government. November 18th, three politicians denied a bigger venue called the propaganda fake news and threw the majority of us, mostly teachers, outside... Threw them outside, all for political agenda optics. There's only one reason why they did that. Why? Optics. Because they know they're not the majority. Stop with the lies. Lastly, vote Christina Gagne out.
Crystal, followed by the final speaker, Bernadette.
All right. Thanks, Viv. I don't know how I can go after that. All right. I'm going in a total different direction here. This is something I've been teetering, talking about, but it has been something heavy on my heart and it was already brought up by a teacher. So, here we go. I want to make this very clear at the beginning that I don't discriminate. I don't care what you identify as. I've worked in the haircare industry for over 15 years with gay stylists. I've even done fashion shows for transgenders. So, I really don't have a problem with what people identify as. But what I do have a problem with is education making children second-guess their gender at such a young age. I have a problem if a boy comes into the bathroom or locker room with my daughter and just so happens he accidentally exposes himself because then you will be seeing sexual harassment charges from me. And you don't think that kids are going to take advantage of these new bathroom guidelines? I can think back right now, when I was in junior high or high school, a handful of boys that would love to take advantage of this. Maybe go get a quickie with their girlfriend in the bathroom. Maybe a girl broke up with them. Maybe a girl turned someone down and they got embarrassed and they want to go get payback and just go into the girl's locker room. And guess what? They can. Because then when they get in trouble, they can just say, "I woke up this morning and I felt like a girl." Or they can just say, "I'm deciding to identify as a girl." Or what happens if, like, the heartbreaking situation that happened at the last meeting and a girl gets beat up? What if that girl has older brothers and they want to get payback and go into the girl's locker room? Then what are you going to do? Again, they can just say, "I identify as a girl. I can go in there," right? It's going to happen. Kids are going to take advantage of this, right? And then what's going to happen? You can't punish them for it because that would be discrimination, right? You can't do anything about it. So, how are you going to handle situations like this? Because I do agree in safety of all children, okay? And I'm sure that these transgender kids are getting bullied, probably going into the boys' bathrooms and stuff. So, how are we going to keep them safe as well? I do believe there needs to be a solution, but I do believe we need to come together and figure it out. I know there was a couple of solutions brought up about having a gender-neutral bathroom. Maybe this needs to be considered a little bit more to where they have their own comfortable place that they can go that they know they won't get picked on. And I think Cruz brought this up, saying maybe about some therapy. I mean, if you're going to identify as the opposite sex, you should be going to some kind of counseling anyways to figure out how you can navigate through this transition. Maybe they should have coded bathrooms to just where the transgender kids know the code so they can be the only ones to access it. I don't know the exact solution, but we should brainstorm some because we need to keep all of our kids safe. And you guys, I'm sure, want to stay out of lawsuits, right? So, at the end of the day, I don't care what they identify themselves as, but God gave them a penis...
Thank you.
Bernadette.
I'm going to let Julie take my time. Currently, SB 328, or the Late Start Bill, is slated to go into effect for the school year of 2023. Looking at the parent survey start times, there are no good options. This will impact our district, our staff, our students, community as a whole, and not in a good way. These options are going to affect many of your district employees who have students as well in this district. First off, asking our youngest students to start so early will impact their ability to stay awake, focus, especially for those who are bus riders and will have to get up even earlier to wait for the buses, which, mind you, you are short on bus drivers. Which I forgot to add that. For those parents that have kids in junior high and high school, some of these students are going to have to start walking to school because parents have jobs and are now going to not be able to drive their kids to school, which leads to anxiety and worry on both parts, as a parent and as a child, especially in the world we live in today. There are also high schoolers that have to drop off and pick up siblings. So, if you don't think that this is going to impact and you're trying to avoid truancy and tardies in the high school level, I'm sorry, you're sadly mistaken because it's going to just even be worse. Later time release is going to interfere with family time, children being picked up at different times at different schools, school activities, trying to juggle homework, family time, and students that are trying to hold down after-school jobs. We understand that teenagers need sleep. We all know that they can sleep till noon. I have two of them. But to use our younger kids to make them suffer... I'm so glad I don't have a kid in elementary school, but I voted with my mom's heart to not make those little kindergartners get up early when my teenagers are used to being at school at 7:20. I'm sorry. They're used to it. They're going to stay up late regardless. So, sorry, I lost track, but whatever. They're going to lose critical school time because some of these kids are going to be pulled for IEP testing and whatever, and there's going to be lots of learning loss. So, I suggest that everybody, the district, the students, the staff, the parents, ask that this be tabled, or better options, be brought to the table because none of these are good and it's going to be a complete disaster.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers on comments on items not on the agenda. Moving on to item 1F, Changes and Deletions. We are now at Changes and Deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions?
There are none.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two, Information Items. We are now at Information Items. Normally, these items are heard at the end of the agenda. However, tonight, we have oral reports to receive on two items. Number one, the 2020-2021 Independent Auditors Annual Financial Audit. And item number two, the Measure G Financial Audit. With that, if there are no questions or comments on any of the other information items, let's go ahead and hear the reports from Scott Braddock of Ed Bailey LLP. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, let's proceed.
Good evening. I'll be presenting the district's financial statements as of June 30, 2021, and the financial and performance audit of the Building Fund Measure G as of June 30, 2021. I'll begin with the audited financial statements, which is the thicker report that was provided. And the first 80 or so pages of this report are primarily just financial information, balances as of June 30, 2021, revenues and expenses through that date, information related to OPEB, pension, et cetera. But to keep this presentation somewhat brief and to the point of presenting the results of our audit, I want to bring your attention to page 103, which is the summary of auditor's results. This page provides an overview of our audit procedures that we perform throughout the year. And there's three sections on this page, each bold and underlined, beginning with financial statements, federal awards, and state compliance. And we're required to issue opinions over each of these audit areas. And if I were to rank opinions from best to worst, an unmodified opinion is a good opinion. It's a clean audit opinion. That means there are no issues identified that resulted in a modification to our opinion or a disclaimer of an opinion. So, with that in mind, beginning at the top there for the financial statement section, we issued an unmodified opinion in relation to the district's financial statements. And then down there below, we indicated that there were no material weaknesses identified and no significant deficiencies identified in relation to internal controls over financial reporting. Additionally, we had no instances of noncompliance related to the financial statements. So, essentially, our audit of the financial statements, no issues were identified. The next section down there is Federal Ward Section. So, again, we indicated no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies in relation to the federal programs that we audited. And the programs that we audited are towards the middle of the page under that Identification of Major Programs header. So, some COVID programs and the special education cluster. And we had an unmodified opinion in relation to our audit of those programs as well. And then the last section at the bottom is the State Compliance Section. The district is required to comply with various state programs. And we audited each of those programs as well and, again, issued an unmodified opinion. So, overall, just a very clean audit. No issues to note. Are there any questions related to the district's financial statement?
Do any board members have any questions? Seeing none, proceed.
So, the next report is the district's Financial and Performance Audit Report for the Building Fund Measure G. This report doesn't have a summary of auditor's results, but if you look at page 12, Financial Statement Findings, you'll note that there were no findings reported for the financial statements of the building fund. And then we also performed a performance audit related to expenditures in the building fund, where we reviewed a sample of expenditures charged to that fund to verify that they were aligned with the purpose of the bond measure. So, page 17 details the results of those procedures. Item 3 indicates that our sampling included transactions totaling roughly $30 million, which represents 20% of total expenditures of roughly $139 million. And through those procedures, there were no instances of noncompliance. Are there any questions related to the Building Fund Audit?
Does the board have any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are now at Action Items. The first item is item 3A1, Public Hearing and Adoption.
I want a point of order.
Yes, Mr. Cruz?
I'd like to table this and make a motion to set a study session for this. I think we need more community input on this.
I second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion from Mr. Cruz and a second from Mr. Naah to table this particular item. The floor on that motion is now open for discussion. Are there any comments from the board? Mr. Schaefer.
Dr. Enfield, could your staff provide the date that the county's supposed to come in and hold their meeting for approval or to hear this issue?
If I'm correct, I think it's February 16th.
Are there any other comments or questions? I have no opposition personally to having a study session. I just do want to note for the public that we do have deadlines so that we can get maps approved because they have to then go into the county and then go into effect. So, I would just ask that the board either right now or probably not right now because we don't need to waste people's time with our calendars, but let's just figure out a date that we can do this as soon as possible so we don't bust through any deadlines. So, if there's no other speakers, Mr. Schaefer, and then Mr. Naah.
Dr. Enfield, did the district provide an opportunity for the public to provide comments, either via email or any type of correspondence with the district on the maps that were presented?
Yeah, just like we did with the last maps, they were posted on the district website and there was notices posted in the community. I think last night we received four responses that were sent to you this morning.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Naah.
Yes, so Mr. Cruz is asking you for a study session and I think we need to have our public involvement and allow them to speak to us so that we could make a better decision than ourselves.
Are there any other questions or comments on this motion? So, just to bring everybody up to speed, we have a motion on the floor requesting to table item 3A1, which is regarding the adoption of trustee areas to set a special study session in regards to this particular item. And then we will agendize that session and notify to the public. So, all those in favor of this motion? I'm going to do a roll call vote just to make this transparent. So, Mr. Bridge?
Aye.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Naah?
Aye.
Mr. Schaefer?
No.
Okay, and I'm a yes, so the motion carries 410. So, this item is being tabled and we will, amongst ourselves, figure out a time for a study session that will be notified to the public. So, I think the purpose of the study session is to answer questions and receive questions. So, I would endorse that this study session has a comment period so we can hear from the public. I believe Mr. Cruz, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Cruz. That's your intent in asking for this, is to have people come in and comment?
Yes.
Okay, yes. So, we will hear comments. I think the purpose is to probably present the maps, hear comments, and then we probably will have to bring this back at the February 3 meeting just to meet that deadline. Okay, moving on to the next item. Item 3A2, Resolution 2021-2022-52, Declaration of a State of Emergency District-Wide Shortage of Classroom Teachers and Staff. Board member James Naah recommends the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2021-2022-52, Declaration of State of Emergency District-Wide Shortage of Classroom Teachers and Staff. Are there any speakers?
We have five speakers.
Okay.
The first speaker is parent advocacy of Chino Valley, followed by Carla Van de Steeg, followed by Kailene Vias.
So, the parent advocacy, along with many others in our community, are in support of this resolution for our teachers and staff. Here's the thing. We are in a state of emergency. We have been in a state of emergency and it's only getting worse. But I do have to say the discrimination part is a big part of this. So, it's only going to further divide our children and teachers. What benefit does that have on anyone? This needs to stop immediately. And if you don't come up with bold stances and you don't make a stand somewhere, our children will ultimately continue to suffer. make a stand somewhere, our children will ultimately continue to suffer. You know, taking even one teacher out of the equation right now is devastating to our children. We know what's going on. Learning loss is an emergency, and if we don't support this and those up in Sacramento do their usual crap, and I want to say something else, of not thinking of who is being affected by this and other things they do, then when will it stop if we don't make it stop? Are we going to continue to allow our children and staff to be abused? Or are we going to do all we can to stop this insanity? One is enough, enough. At what cost are we going to say enough? Hearing from the mouth of someone in Sacramento that if senators challenge things like this, their legislation package will be jeopardized should make you all shiver because I've heard that multiple times in this week only. They're literally using our children and our staff without any conscience of the damage that's being done, all because of what? Who's going to come and clean it up? Are you going to look at our children when they're suffering even more? Are you guys going to answer to them at night when you find them in their beds crying? Because that's what's happening. It's disgusting, and it's heartbreaking. It's awful. These teachers are being beat up. How do you think that is? If I go to my husband every single night and I say, "You suck. You don't make me do this. You don't do this for me." Start pushing him away. What is that going to do to him? He's going to be not worthy to anybody, including himself, and that's what we're doing to our teachers and staff, and it needs to stop. We are not going to allow it. So tonight, we not only support this resolution item, we will do everything behind this. You want the work done? You want us to go meet the senators? I've already been doing it. Tell me which one. You want the work done? You want the signatures? You want me to fly up to Sacramento? I'll drive every day if I know it makes a difference. You have people in here willing to do that work. Now use them, okay? So tonight, we will support this resolution, but we're also requesting an additional resolution that will help stop the discrimination. According to California Edcode 35145.5, we officially request that the following and will follow up in writing that a resolution item gets put on the agenda immediately, that all staff or no staff is tested. If it's about our children's safety, it needs to be across the board, and I won't stand for it, along with all these parents, that if you are actually for the child's safety...
All of them are going to be tested. Carla Van de Steeg, followed by Kailene Vias, followed by Erin Vias.
I am reading this for Chris Stevens tonight, who couldn't be here. These are his words. Thank you to all that showed up tonight in support of this agenda item. We feel it's very important that we have a clear understanding of what this state of emergency resolution means for us. First, thank you to the members of the board that voted last November 4 to rescind the vaccine mandate proposed by Governor Newsom. That gives us hope and promise that we're on the right track to doing the right thing to support all its employees. Tonight, we are here to support the state of emergency resolution as proposed in December of 2021. We are in a state of emergency right now. This is a dress rehearsal for the ramifications that will take place in the fall if, in fact, the mandate does go through and if, in fact, there are teachers and classified staff that are fired. To use a sports analogy, it's the big game being played against a very tough opponent, and we went into the first half or semester, and we played our hardest and followed the game plan. We finished up that first half feeling pretty good, but winded and tired. We went in at halftime on our Christmas break, and as tough as the first half was and the challenges that we endured, we regrouped, refocused, got our minds and hearts right for the second half to come. We came back out for the second half kickoff, and everything that could go wrong has gone wrong, and now we are starting to have the sense that we may not win this game. But we keep fighting, keep coming back to work every day to try to make a difference in the students who we have been entrusted to. The clock is ticking, the game is not out of reach. We need reinforcements. We need a spark to ignite us and get us fired up again and back in the game. Your voice is that spark. We are in a state of emergency today. The first three weeks of school have been nothing short of a challenge for our sites. I can tell you firsthand from Chino Hills High that we have been challenged since we got back with classified staff and certificated staff being out days at a time. There has been an average of nine to 10 classes per day that are unsupervised, no teachers, no subs. Those students are being walked to the gym daily to sit in the gym for their class periods, and some students go through three or four classes in the same day. That's an average of about 1,800 students per day in our gym not being taught and not being given the opportunity to learn. Chino Hills High has six security guards employed throughout the day, and we are now down to two on campus this past week. Are we keeping our schools safe? We have resilient students and staff that have made lemonade out of lemons, but it will not hold. What is going to happen in the fall when you remove certificated and classified staff members? Do you have a plan for this? Do you honestly think more people will show up ready to teach and hold down your offices? We are asking you today to vote a resounding yes for the state of emergency. Our kids' educational lives depend on it, your constituents need it. We need a board that is willing to say yes to the in-person education of our students. Thank you in advance for voting yes to the letter and spirit behind the resolution as written and presented to your community. We need this spark. We need to ensure that everyone employed in your district, regardless of vaccination status, remains intact and employed in this district because our kids are depending on it. Thank you for your time.
Kailene Vias, followed by Erin Vias, followed by Oscar Avila.
Good evening, distinguished board, cabinet members, teachers and staff. I come here tonight to urge the CVUSD Board of Education to vote a yes on the emergency resolution as it is of workforce shortage that is before you tonight. Here in CVUSD, we are clearly in a state of emergency when it comes to the fulfillment of our certificated and classified staff at the district level and at school sites. Every day, there is a shortage of substitutes for every position within the district, which has a negative impact on our students and their learning. There is not a day that goes by that we do not see classes that are uncovered without a substitute or varying classified positions without coverage. Let me just give you the numbers. January 10, 2022, certificated, 238 absent, 108 unfilled. Classified, 212 absent, 98 unfilled. Tuesday, January 11, certificated, 233 absent, 106 unfilled. Classified, 194 absent, 84 unfilled. Wednesday, certificated, 239 absent, 102 unfilled. Classified, 194 absent, 83 unfilled. January 13, certificated, 248 absent, 97 unfilled. Classified, 205 absent, 101 unfilled. Friday, January 14, always a Friday, 286 absent, 121 unfilled. Classified, 220 absent, 97 unfilled. These numbers are atrocious. This leads to classrooms being combined, RSP teachers having to take a class, causing students to miss their IEP legal minutes, required services, intervention teachers having to take classes, leaving the high-risk students not receiving the service time. They need to make sure they know the core knowledge of just basic skills. For classified staff, that cites this means classrooms aren't being cleaned, attendance isn't being done or reported or tracked that day for COVID whatever on time, students not having one-on-one aides, nutrition service workers down to one in cafeterias, and more. With the staff you have now, the district is hemorrhaging and barely making it through every day. Numbers do not lie. Add an additional 200 unvaccinated, certificated, fired teachers and an additional 30% 330 unvaccinated, fired classified staff to those numbers that I just told you, and here they are. January 10, 438 certificated absent, 542 classified. January 11, 433 absent, 524 classified absent. January 12, 439 absent, certificated, 524 classified. January 13, 448 absent, certificated, 535 classified. January 15, 46 absent, certificated, 550 classified. What is the district's plan to handle such absences? You can't fill the positions now with staffing that we do have, and some positions have been flying on ed joint for months, re-flown, not filled. I know that all school business subs up until February 15 were canceled and maybe for the rest of the year, but that is not going to fix these numbers. Thank you.
Erin Vias, followed by Oscar Avila.
You cannot get substitutes now, and you are even already outsourcing them to stepping stone for aides, and there is still a shortage. You are outsourcing positions. I strongly urge the district to vote a yes on this revolution before you tonight as is. The board, superintendent, cabinet members, to continue to say that they are committed to in-person learning and that that is the best learning environment for CVUSD students. This resolution will enforce that commitment that you say you are for and you say you are fighting for. Keep your dedicated classified and certificated staff. We are jointly committed to you and have been committed to our positions, our jobs, our students, and our schools, standing at our posts faithfully from the beginning 22 months ago, and have walked through the mud, the fire, the hardships, the changes, and we are still here for you. How many, tonight, how many staff, certificated, classified, stand with me right now to keep every Chino Valley Unified School District employee at their jobs and standing at their posts? Stand up with me right now. Every parent, friend, family member, community member who is with us to keep every staff member at their post to service our students, stand with me right now. As you can see, this community, these staff members, these family members, urge this board and superintendent Enfield, keep us hired, vote a yes on this state of emergency right now so we do not fail our staff, our students, our parents by causing a loss of staff and a loss of in-person learning. We are committed to you, to in-person learning now and in the future. I urge you to vote a yes on this resolution as it is, with no changes, and you show your commitment to us tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Avila.
All right, good evening, board members. Happy to see your beautiful faces again after the holidays. I'm glad you guys are okay and alive, the COVID monster didn't get you. Praise God. I'm here to just to say that I motioned yes, resolution for declaration of state of emergency for district-wide shortage of classroom teachers. And I know that a lot of teachers are missing, you know, because either, you know, they're not following the mandates or, you know, just, you know, they're not vaccinated or they don't feel that they're safe. But I got a personal story, right? My daughter's an avid student, and they've been flipping through teachers, you know, because a lot of them are not coming and a lot of them are not stable, and it's happening through the classrooms. But I got a pretty good, smart teacher, a pretty smart kid, you know, good teacher, they love her, but it's really hard to kind of keep the curriculum going when you have a sub all the time coming in because you don't have the regular one. So when you pick out a student that's advancing and you want to, you know, give them tours of Ivy League schools and all that, you want to do your best to promote that student, especially if he's a minority. You guys care about minorities, right? You guys think that we need help and all that. So I would figure that you would want a teacher that's there permanently to really help her get and excel to the next level. So by her having subs all the time, you know, she's a smart kid, she learns on her own. I was blessed because she's surpassed me a long time ago. So, you know, I'll just confuse her if I try to help her. But what it is, is if you want your kids to be the best, and we want to send the best, you know, into the world, we want to make sure that we have good teachers, you know? And when you're putting pressure on teachers, you know, to do that, those that really have a heart for students have a hard time coming and doing that because maybe for whatever reason they can't get vaccinated or whatever, they can't wear a mask all day. Something to think about that. Also, on a personal note, I have a soon-to-be granddaughter, my fiance's granddaughter. They took her into the emergency room yesterday, and they're keeping her for a 72-hour observation, right? You know what that means. And she said she was having depression issues and all that. So I'm just saying, and she's been homeschooled, and I'm just saying that these lockdowns and these sending kids home for 10 days or five days now really affects our kids, you know? And we're seeing a really spike in, you know, tendencies to hurt themselves and all that. So really consider that. Maybe you don't have any kids that are my kid's age. My granddaughter, she's 12, you know? So understand, soon-to-be, understand that kids don't understand what's going on and they're having a hard time, you know, adjusting. Don't do that to the kids, you know? Don't put the pressure where they can't go to school because they don't have something that you want them to have because they're dealing with it in a different way. It's new to us. I'm having a hard time with it. They would too. So she's in the hospital now, getting evaluated, so think about that. She's not the only one, but it's a personal story for me to you, okay? And I'll be back next time to tell you what happened.
Thank you. Thank you to our speakers. May I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion for Mr. Na. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, a second from Mr. Cruz. Any comments, questions, or discussion? I see Mr. Na, you're light.
No.
Okay. Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, let me go ahead and read the resolution. In our Chino Valley Unified School District serves 26,000 students at 32 at school sites, Chino Hills in South Ontario. Due to COVID-19 pandemic situation, the district has a great difficulty in staffing and classroom instruction and support positions for all students. The district has already increased substitute pay in order to attract and retain teaching and support staff, but is still experiencing a workforce shortage. The Board of Education declares that the Chino Valley Unified School District is unable to release the schoolteachers and support staff due to the state COVID-19 mandates. Now, when the board signed a document March of 2020, giving Dr. Enfield any and all authority to deal with COVID-19, number three specifically states authorize a superintendent or his destiny to take any and all actions necessary to ensure the continuation of public education. And this was well-written, Mr. Na, and our priority is our children and our staff. That is our priority because without that, education's going to fall apart. It's going to collapse if we continue this. We see it. So we've got to stop this. So you did the right thing. So thank you.
Mr. Schaefer?
I'd like to seek some clarification on, let's see, third, fourth paragraph where it says that the district is unable to release its schoolteachers and support staff. For how long? What is the duration on this? What do we do with our contract?
Until the pandemic's over.
Well, it doesn't state that. What about our contracted teachers that are contracted annually? It's an annual contract that are filling in for teachers that are on an extended leave of absence.
Yeah, but these were specified with directives from the state. It's not our policy. There's a great separation. What we're talking about is the state mandates, and it doesn't work, and it harms our children.
But this resolution doesn't state that, and this resolution binds the district then into potentially overstaffing certain positions that have been on a contract.
I would ask, everyone has had their time. Should they have elected to speak? Please listen to the board members. Mr. Schaefer?
I just, without some additional language or some modification, this is too vague for me, and I don't support it.
Mr. Cruz?
Then go ahead and add whatever you want. Go for it.
Well, it needs to be reworked, and it's, quite honestly, I'm not going to do that. I mean, Mr. Na put this forward. I think he should be the one that would amend it or make the changes.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Bridge?
Yeah, just a follow-up on that same paragraph, but a different question than Mr. Schaefer. I know it says to release schoolteachers and support staff due to the state's COVID-19 mandates. I just want to make sure that it's clear that if a teacher or staff member wants to voluntarily leave the district in mid-year for either another assignment or elsewhere or they have family moving out of state or whatever, that they will be allowed to be released because when I see this, I can see where that can be misinterpreted. So if it's just the COVID-19 mandates, like it says, I'm just throwing out there for clarification to make sure because I know that there are teachers and staff that sometimes leave mid-year, mid-semester, and in some other districts, I've seen it where they have not been allowed to leave. They have not been allowed to get out of their contract. So as long as that is clear, I'm okay in supporting this.
Mr. Na.
Yes, that's a common sense. If staffs or teachers wants to move, yeah, we don't bind them. This is a country of freedom. So yes, Mr. Bridge.
Mr. Na, I have a question for you. It seems that there is a proposal to amend the resolution to provide clarity, not to undermine the purpose of the resolution. Would you be willing to work with other board members to add those clarifications and bring that back on February 3?
No, I would like to have it done right now, and if there's a better resolution, if there's a better resolution to make it strengthen, then we could redo it on the next meeting. I'm open to that, but as of today... if, if, if there's a better resolution to make it strengthen, then we could redo it on the next meeting. I'm, I'm open to that. But as of today, I'd like to have it as it is, because it is quite clear to understand from not only the staffs, but clearly from the public. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz.
Yeah, man, you know, this, this disturbs me. It's the idea that we're dealing with humanity, the love of people. I don't know why we're questioning this and that. It's a bunch of BS, you know? I want to know what is the, the problem of some of your hearts? You know what I mean? Because this is very simple, very simple. Children shouldn't be wearing masks, because you're exactly right. It is causing them mental issues, okay? There's a lot of stress going on and so forth. And we're trying our best to find solutions to keep our people. And, and the way you guys, your mentality, it's just crazy, man. Just, just, let's vote on it.
Are there any other questions or comments? So I'm going to try to summarize what's happening. You're willing to take amendments here today, but you're not willing to take the same amendments and collaborate and bring this back February 3rd, knowing that this will probably pass potentially unanimously?
No, what I'm saying is that it could come back if we would find something, because things are fluid as of today with COVID and, and the state and funding, all these situations. But as of now, our teachers and staff needs a support that we're there for them to teach our children. That is my intention, and that is period. There are things that you could wait. Wait for five years from now, six months from now, but it's then. But in today's lives right now, what we're looking at is daily lives, daily lives of our children, daily lives of our teachers and our staff members. And we need to be there for them. It's not the state that who's going to come and, and support our kids. So we need to show this stand. Everybody and everything, all the policies, resolutions, I would call it a work in progress. So if there's a better ideas to strengthen, make it better, then we could always do it following time. But as of today, we need to make this stance. It's, I think, already too late. Thank you.
Are there any speakers on this from the dais? So for clarification, Mr. Na, I'm trying here. Is it that you want to declare a state of emergency today? And make sure we do that today?
Yeah, what the resolution says.
Okay, but you, you're not willing to work to just make, clarify things. I think that there, I'm reading there's an intent on the dais to want to support this.
If there's a clarification that's needed, then we could come back and do another resolution to replace this one, but as of today, we need to do this. And our parents and our, our teachers, they've been here for how long? How many months, wanting support and, and working with us? So we need to respect them, respect our teachers, respect our parents and staff members. They're all there for our children. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will take this to a vote. Before I do that, very quickly, I, I am in support of the intent of this resolution. Let's not start booing, let me just finish what I'm going to say. I am in support of the intent of this, but I will be bringing back a resolution for some clarity, because there are some cases here that legally can cause problems for the district, not the intent of this resolution, but there were some suggestions brought up. I also want to make sure that we're not hindering any hiring or processes with our temporary teachers, because there are use cases where we have individuals who are out on leave for medical reasons, and they are replaced for a year. So we do need to provide some clarity to this policy for just general administrative purposes and making sure we're supporting all of our teachers. So I am going to note that I will be bringing back a resolution to clarify that. With that, I will take a vote. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bridge.
Aye.
Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Na.
Aye.
Mr. Schaefer.
No.
And I'm a yes, motion carries 410. Uh, I, I want to ma, I want to maintain my request that we maintain decorum in the meetings. I appreciate, I appreciate the enthusiasm, but let's power through and get this over with. I also want to endorse the board to keep comments to a, to a succinct little, little piece here. Moving on to consent items. Item number four is consent. We're now at consent. Pat, are there any speakers on consent items? Okay, seeing that there's no speakers, board members, are there any polls? Mr. Schaefer.
No polls.
Mr. Bridge.
No polls.
Uh, Mr. Na.
No polls.
Mr. Cruz.
No polls.
I have one poll. It's item 4D11 on page 122. That's 4D11 on page 122. For the remainder of the consent items, may I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Mr. Na, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bridge or Mr. Schaefer? Mr. Bridge? Okay. All those in favor of the remainder of the consent items, may I have an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries 50. Coming back to the polled item, I have polled item number 4D11, page 122. I have a conflict of interest as a shareholder.
So moved.
Oh, sorry. I get a motion to consider this consent item from Mr. Na. The motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bridge. Now the floor is open for discussion. I am a shareholder at Carlton Fields. I have a conflict of interest with one of the parties named in this particular action item. So on this action item, we'll now take it to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I abstain. So the motion carries 401. Moving on now to our board comments. We are now at communications. Mr. Schaefer.
No comments.
All right, no comments for Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Bridge.
Just on grandbaby watch, so no comments.
All right, no comments. Mr. Na.
Yes, I'd like to have our staff look into a student from Don Lugo High School, a student incident with a mask. Make sure that the right things were conducted for our student's sake, and make sure that he will receive the best education. I, I'd like to really look into it, because sometimes these things could really traumatize students. And, and I don't know, I haven't heard either side of the story yet, but I am very, very interested in our, our, our health of our student and, and our community. So I'd like to have our staff go look into that. Dr. Enfield?
Yeah, I got that in my notes.
Okay, thank you. And also, I got a letter from Audrina Serida from Kenyon Junior High School requesting to look into having a crossguard at her school. So I had, I asked our staff members to do a review. So it's coming. Thank you for the letter. Yes. Best way to prevent this virus spread. Matter of fact, I have tons of my friends that who caught, whether Omicron or flu, or in combinations. And it makes great sense when speakers had spoken today about who's spreading this virus. It's all of us. It's all of us. It's mostly human, but who's been vaccinated or not vaccinated, even with the people with booster shots. They would spread, and they would get sick. So I would consider looking into our policy. If, if it's necessary, as one of the speaker had asked, I could come up with a resolution. Because the best way to prevent the virus spread, like flu, would be having the people that had, showing the symptoms, staying home. But other than that, if we were doing a testing, we should be testing all the stakeholders, not just those people who are unvaccinated. So I'll be doing my own study on that. So thank you for all these inputs. And, and again, I'd like to thank our, our teachers and, and staff members from bottom of my heart, being on the first line for our children's sake. And, and I would pray that all of our staffs would love our children, our students as your own. And, and this new year, hopefully that we could really beat this COVID and be from, be free from it. Discrimination against people that, whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated is, I think, un-American, because this is a time that we need to really come together. So that is my comment for tonight. Thank you all for coming here tonight. And I especially like to thank the student in the back. We had only one speaker, but I'd like to thank her and, and her mom. I believe, I think they're at Chino Hills High School. So thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Na. Mr. Cruz.
You know, our superheroes, that's what you guys are. But, you know, it's important not to stop, because this is never going to go away. This is, this is it. And we'll see what direction the whole world is going to go towards. But like I said, in our community, we can make big changes, big changes for people that will sacrifice for others. And the only way that will occur is we'll have to reinstate people that love humanity. And that's going to be important in the future. And that's what we're going to need, because we can't just fight like them, because we would be just like them. The WHO leading scientist says there's no evidence at all that healthy children and adolescents need a COVID shot. That's the WHO. It, it's kind of interesting when you see how they cover their butts. But it's only a soft wave, but they'll come back. They'll, they'll come back. And then there's a shocking analysis of CDC data confirms massive 40% spike in deaths among 18 and 49-year-olds over the past year, the highest death rates in history. Indiana Insurance CEO says. And it's not COVID. We noticed that there's a lot of sports figures collapsing and dying, way beyond unheard of, you know? It happens too often. But I'm so proud, I'm so proud of the community. What a difference. If you guys were here, man, it would be super bad. We would be just like other school districts, but because of you, because of your heroism, I'm so proud, I'm really proud. And Sonia, you have to, these people can't stop coming. Because they may think this is a victory, but they have to push on, push on, because they're going to be relentless. They ain't going to stop. I think you know that already. So I hope they don't, they have to come. They have to come, because if they don't, then things will go back how they are. So I'm very impressed. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Dr. Enfield.
Yeah, first of all, I want to wish everybody a happy new year. And I want to use the term you used, Mr. Cruz, superheroes. I, I, I like that, because January is probably going to be the, the most difficult month we have faced with the pandemic here in our school district. And it's the superheroes, all of our teachers, our certificated staff, our classified staff, our administrators who've been on the front lines ensuring that our schools are open so that our kids can be here in school. And I can tell you, it hasn't been perfect. We've had some really difficult times. I, I know we had times where we only had one cafeteria worker at a school site to be able to deliver. We had our M&amp;O department that was going to go out and help deliver lunches, but we were able to cover all that. We've had a high number of substitutes, and we've had to do things that typically we wouldn't want to do. But I believe it's better to keep our kids here at school and to get them here and, and get through this month. The good news is we're starting to see a downtick. I, I know we still have a couple more weeks, hopefully just a few more weeks, and we can get back to somewhat more of a, a, a normal school day for our, our students. But I want to thank the community and the parents for understanding that, that it has been very difficult in to support our schools, our teachers, our support staff who are on that front lines that are making this happen. So again, I'm very proud of the work that our staff does at this district to get our kids back here and, and being in, in person, because they need to be here. This is, this is a sense of normalcy for them. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Enfield. Well, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening, and for those of you that have stuck around this long, I appreciate it. Dr. Enfield, you just said something, a sense of normalcy that I think is important, and that dovetails into something that several parents brought up this evening, and something that I know I'm not too keen on, which is SB 328. This is an ill-conceived piece of legislation that failed several times in the legislature. I have no idea why a senator 20 minutes away has been pushing this thing, knowing where we're located, knowing the challenges of a school district like ours. I don't think that this is reflective of the challenges we face as a unified school district. I don't think it's reflective of the challenges we face with our commuter population. And frankly, with COVID and all of the inconsistency, I don't think putting more inconsistency and new things in place next school year really makes any sense. So I will be bringing a resolution in support of the state senate and state assembly amending SB 328, so that we can fight to at least get a waiver for a couple years